All right, it is six oh one, I'm gonna call the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Our first item of business is the pledge of allegiance. Charlie, would you like to lead the group?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When you, why it's folded up?
All members of the Board of Selectmen are present. Our first item of business is the approval of the meeting minutes from February twenty second, twenty twenty three. They're in your packet. Are there any questions or corrections? Or is there a motion for approval?
A move that we approve the Board of Selectmen's special meetings/ budget workshop meeting minutes from February twenty second, twenty twenty three.
Oh, is there a second? Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Jason, who was the second? Was it?
Maker was Musk, a seconder was Norde.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, regular meeting from April sixth, twenty twenty three?
I did find an error on page eight. The gentleman from Rise Up For The Arts, his name is actually Matt Conway and not Mike Conley.
Yep.
Thank you. C O N W A Y, Sarah?
Couldn't hear you peg, I'm sorry.
Uh, C O N W A Y?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay.
Any other corrections? Seeing none, the motion to approve the amended minutes would be in order?
Move to approve the amended minutes of the Board of Selectmen regular meeting from April sixth, twenty twenty three.
Second, motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion or further corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Uh, we have a new appointment. Sarah, I think you did some additional due diligence on this. Want to tell us about Stacy McKenna, or are you good to go?
Oh, I'm good to go. Um, I will move to appoint Stacy McKenna to the Planning and Zoning Commission as a regular member for a term expiring October first, twenty twenty three.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries unanimous. Uh, let me just take a check of interference. Um, let's see, if we could take a couple of, couple of things out of order, can we take, take tax refunds?
Make a motion to go out of order and take tax refunds, uh.
Age?
Is it age? I'll say.
Second.
Uh, all in favor of taking agenda item eight each out of order, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. Uh, um, tax refunds, fair.
A move to approve the tax refunds totaling three thousand two hundred sixty-two dollars and forty-seven cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And now I'd like to take agenda item eleven, eleven out of order to approve town attorney Joshua Hawkslads.
So move?
Second.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are in executive session at six oh five P M. Think there will be, there will be votes afterwards, most likely.
Okay, I will look for them tomorrow.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
We're out of executive session at seven twenty eight. Uh, our next item of business is agenda item eight A. Um, is there a motion?
Motion to authorize the first selectmen to sign the collective bargaining agreement between uh, the town of East Windsor and U S U P S E U, United Public Service Employees Union, um, for the period of July one, twenty twenty one through June thirty, twenty twenty five.
So that's not eight A. The, you're on E T. Eight A is memorandum of agreement between counties.
Uh, make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement, um, regarding the senior center nutrition site coordinator and allow the, authorize the first selectman to sign it. Um, this is between the town of East Windsor and U P S E U, the East Windsor Municipal Clerical Employees Unit, Union, um, with effective date July one, two thousand eighteen through June thirty, two thousand twenty one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention.
Abstention.
Motion carries unanimously. Um. Let's, uh, if I could have a motion to take out of order agenda items eight, B, and F?
Move to take, um, agenda items eight, pick up agenda items eight D and eight F.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Um, we're on to E T. Selectmen, baker?
Uh, make a motion to authorize the first selectmen to approve the, to sign the collective bargaining agreement between the town of East Windsor and the United Public Service Employees Union, Local four twenty-four, Unit ninety-one, dated July one, twenty twenty one through June thirty, twenty twenty five.
Is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Agenda item eight F. Okay, uh, as you know, Jun- Juneteenth is now a recognized state and federal holiday. Um, it's not included in our like bargaining agreements. Um, I'd like to ask the board to approve to close town government on June, uh, June nineteenth in observation of the state and federal holiday.
Make a motion to close town government on June nineteenth in observation of the state and federal holiday, Juneteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. I'd like to ask them to post home agenda items eight E and eight G.
Post home agenda items eight E and eight.
Second half. Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
So carried. Um, Mr. Sauerhoffer, we're on to eight B at the session of the, uh, town facilities meeting room, uh, policy.
Okay. So in front of you all, not in front of me, is a copy of our policy to use the meeting room for outside of town activities, or anybody who really basically wants to do it. Um, we put this together, tried to put some guidelines in there. Just so, you know, we can protect the town assets and everything gets put back the way it belongs and, you know, just a few guidelines that we're, we're getting a lot of um, associations that are looking for meeting spaces that don't have them, that have meetings once a month and we want to make the town hall and the annex available to them. So we thought it'd be best to have a policy that way there. If something gets damaged, broken, or what have you, they can be held responsible because it's not up to the taxpayers to have to fix things.
Here in this room, what's the fire item?
Here?
Yeah.
Um.
Eighty-four?
Eighty-eight.
And it just goes in, in B, there's a, a typo, I wanted to just clarify that.
Says four people. We're in violation.
Eighty, eighty-eight. It, it's very confusing because during COVID, it got like really crazy and
Oh yeah, I remember that.
Yeah.
What's the, uh, procedure as far as if an outside organization wants to rent the room? Who opens the door and who locks the doors?
So what will happen is if you want to rent the room, you'll come in, go to the first selectman's office, fill the simple application out. We tried to make it simple. And, um, then you will receive, you will get a, you will sign a FOB up. That will pop the doors open and then double pop them to leave them unlocked. And then you're responsible to lock the building when you leave.
And is that only good for this?
And then they, yeah, no, they have to bring the FOB back, the following, within a reasonable amount. I'm not sure what a reasonable amount. I, I would think the next day, but I'm not quite sure if we give people Grace beer or not on when to bring it back. But they'll sign it out, they'll be responsible for it and luckily with the FOB system too, if it doesn't come back, easily shut off. It's not like we were years ago with keys. Everybody had a key for down home.
Right.
I saw everything.
But it doesn't work. It's changed a lot. Uh, I like the FOB system plus I can it, it, you know, I'm, I'm usually in the building at six o'clock every morning, so I'll know and then I'll be able to tell. But I also remotely can lock the building or check if the building's locked or not, so it's, it's convenient for me, the FOB system. I wish all the buildings had it.
And we're doing this at no charge, right?
Absolutely. It is still public building.
Now you mentioned the town hall or the town hall annex.
Mm-hmm. It's meeting rooms in general. We, we did not really, because primarily the annex, Melissa does a lot of stuff down there anyway, so we keep a calendar down there. It's hard to squeeze down in there because there's yoga and there's this and then there's the, the Girl Scouts and there's a lot of activity down there.
My recommendation would just be to have them like make another line on here or what meeting room they request. Okay, whether it's this one or the one down the hall or the annex.
That, that is a good idea.
Identify the meeting room. Meeting place.
Room requested.
Yeah.
I mean, this, to me, is not a bad problem. People look into using our space.
Now, the most frequent flyers lately are condo associations.
Right. But at least it, it also holds them a little more accountable than us coming in the morning and having to sweep up the floor, put the chairs all back, you know, it's a little bit of accountability.
My biggest concern is with the FOBs, I've seen a lot of people have a hard time get the, getting the door to re-lock and if somebody doesn't lock the door and then the door is unlocked and then somebody else comes in.
I, I felt the same way and I talked to Melissa and, and either Jen or Melissa will actually have to show them how it works.
Can we program the system so that it re-triggers the locks at ten o'clock?
That's what's, what is going to ask, you know?
Well, then I would have to shut the system off, that reprogram. It can only do it once. It's a very it's not a very elaborate staring system. It's a very low budget.
So we couldn't even program it to unlock at nine, nine P M and lock at ten P M?
No. What if they're not done?
Well, then they just wouldn't get re-entry, but it would still let them out. They just wouldn't get re-entry.
Now, I think we, we gotta look into improving that system if we're gonna be kind of opening this up because I think we I mean, it's very possible if somebody just leaves the door. You know?
Well, quite honestly, the meeting room annex is never locked.
Yeah, I'm not concerned about them. We don't even give these out for the annex, they just go through, we say.
Other, uh, constructive criticism? Really had a couple of good ones.
This one. This is just for town hall annex and town hall here?
These are the only two meeting spaces we have at this time.
Okay, I'm asking for a reason because you've got it in here that the kitchen can be used with permission. Why would we want to give anyone that's an employee lounge area? That's not a
Well, we don't want to come back to you in maybe thirteen months and have to change the policy again.
We're gonna have to change.
We're gonna have to change this. Because I'm gonna tell you right now, if I, if I'm down here and what the, um, I come down here for a, uh, town meeting meeting, I'm gonna be required, because I'm not part of the town, I'm gonna be required to make sure the toilets are flushed. I mean, there's other people in the building besides me and you've seen them, so I'm in that room here, so who are you gonna know who's gonna be responsible for what? I mean, I don't have power to flush the toilets, but if we flush the toilet at seven fifteen and we're done and somebody is in the meeting room over there, who's gonna be homecoming?
The person who let the room la, the, the person who let the building last? Right now, it's a free-for-all, okay? Um, how I'm doing is I'm just looking for some order, so I don't have to come in and, or have one of the of the facilities guy come in and put the chairs back, fix the room back up because i- it's important to me that this room looks, if someone walks by this room during the course of a day, it should look like a meeting room, not like, uh, you know, kids were just in their play, so. I mean, there's, there are ways for us to be able to tell you know, who's been here and who hasn't and, you know, if if it's a matter of somebody happened to log onto their computer at nine o'clock at night to make sure the doors are locked, rather than spending money to upgrade a locking system because it's
Locking system works all the time. Guy that falls asleep watching Yukon at nine does not. Guy that's sick from COVID does not, like, like, I'm going through.
I understand, but there are a lot of, it, there are a lot of other priority things that I think are, that maybe we should be thinking about, like the sound system in the meeting room, security cameras. The more important things we should be spending on, then something that I have no problem making sure the building's locked at night before we spend, there, there's monitors I want to buy. There's a lot of things I could make.
I get you. I, there's a lot of spending about thirty, one, between twenty and thirty thousand dollars.
Because that's what it's gonna cost to do the community center, about thirty thousand dollars.
For the FOBs.
For the FOB system. Which integrates into a security system.
That's a good investment. Well, we're coming up on end of year. So I think the, the overall point is we're trying to make the public spaces available to public groups who may need them. Um, but we're trying to do it in a way that's still orderly and, and manageable from an operations standpoint. That's what the policy attempt is trying to do.
I agree with the policy. I'm just, you know, concerned with our security, that's all.
Joe doesn't sleep at all.
And I, and I, and Joe, you wear how many hats? Five?
No.
You know?
One, big one. It's a umbrella now.
It does.
That is all this.
Not a good road to go down. Like having people never always on. That's not, that's not, it's not fair to Joe. It's not fair that it's not a good way to do things.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you this, in the ten years plus and people have been in and out of here and prior to us going to the locking system we have, okay? The building rarely was unlocked. Rare, I mean, rarely. And you know, it, the lights were left on. That, that concerned me more than the doors being unlocked. The lights were left on, the lights could be left on. That's primarily what we're going.
Right, these are a lot of matters.
Not in this room, because you can't have it, because if you don't move, they go off. S J, have you ever been in his office? He has to do this every couple hours.
Are you sure? I, I've been in here, I'm not picking up subject, but I've been in here when these, when the, these lights have popped up.
No. See there? They're heart switches. In here, in the hallway?
Always.
They're, they're on automatics and, and a lot of the other hallways and
I, I don't need to move anybody. This is just for the annex in here. I don't think people should be using that, but your staff leads their food in there, your staff need their personal stuff in there and you don't have a cooking facility at all over at the other side.
What's gonna happen if you take that out? Because people are going to use that anyway without any recourse.
What if you want to fill, what if you're making coffee? What if after you're done, you need a you know? I th- there's a microwave in there, Murray. There's not much they can do.
Yeah, it's still, it didn't work, I don't think.
The cooktop? No, I haven't turned off because it's touch button and sometimes when you put something on top of a touch button, it turns on and then if you don't know it, so it, it's powered off. And nobody's asked to use it in a long time.
So we, we still got a long night ahead of us, so guys wanna, uh?
I can make the changes and come back.
Yeah, let's.
Okay?
Okay. Um, can I ask for a motion to close upon this until May fourth? So move?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um.
South Road, okay, quickly, well. I'll talk quickly. So one of our properties we have on South Road, we have a sewer, sewer line issue.
This is one of the ones that has not been made to do the homeowner.
So I, we need, we've wrote over without the line, we, we've tried to, uh Did I give you multiple copies? Or did I not take them all on?
A bit.
Um, we, we've wrote rooted out the line up there and we're discovering, which we already knew, but there's, it's six inch clay, two foot pieces of pipe. And what happens is they just dry fit it to another belt. And over the years, the ground moves, the roots grow in. Bottom line is it needs to be replaced. So I went out and I got three local contractors, I got prices from them. And as you can see, I put them in numeric order of how they came in. The first one's at thirty-five hundred, second one's at four thousand and the, the last one's at forty-two hundred. So, um, they're both have their P sevens, they've both worked for the, the sewer plant before this. They've, uh, done work in town and fortunately that the number one person is, um, a relative.
So when the policy says we, with, uh, we can get three prices for, for jobs that are under five thousand dollars. Joe got those. When it came back that Coda Construction was the, the low bidder, he suggested that because there was a familiar, a, a familial connection that it'd be appropriate for the Board of Selectmen to review the bids to, so that we make the determination in this case, even though these are off of our, um, on-call vendor lists.
Well, actually, Coda is the only one on the on-call vendor list. Holden is the other, but Johnny takes three to four weeks to get back pricing. We can't wait. I've already, this is already gone a month. We wrote a rooted it. That she doesn't have any issues now. I want to get it fixed. And it's, it's not, I mean, it's a five hundred dollar difference between one and the other.
Honestly, I'd rather just go with M D B Construction for the five hundred dollar difference and just not have any kind of people saying that there was some change in this idea.
Make, make a motion.
Make a motion to accept the estimate from M D B Construction LLC for four thousand dollars to install the sewer at five South Road. Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah. Um. I think we're doing a disservice to our taxpayer companies in this town to exclude them, but somebody might think there's an offensive interest. Um. The reputation of co-construction outside of a handful of people, um, is a good one, um. And if we're gonna go, and normally if there was no name on this, I'm sure we would all take a look at this and say we're gonna go with the lowest bid, because typically they go with the lowest bidding. Um, these other companies, um, are out of East Windsor and I don't think it's fair for company because of who there might be some relationship with is always gonna be excluded from anything that they've done, because anything they have done for us has been done well, so, um.
Well, I, that was the reason for, even though the policy said we could have just gone with the low bidder. Um, we wanted to bring it here so that there was transparency. But.
I agree wholeheartedly with Murray.
Uh, I'll keep my motion quiet.
Have we, so have we ever used this M D B?
Yes. Yeah, he's got some small workforce too.
Not making it longer. I put my motion out there.
Aye. Any other, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three to ones. Leave it to M D B.
Oh.
I can basically keep mine on him.
Uh, is there any public participation? Uh, you, sir, name and address, I got you in the back, the good guy.
Paul Anderson, Indiania Main Street, property. Um, we have any idea when the public will get a, uh, complete like property maintenance ordinance copy? That is actually the one that's gonna be at the town meeting sometime? For the public has the time to read it. And I don't know when that town meeting might be, so I'm not telling you a date, but whatever.
Uh, it, it certainly will be available once the county notices filed and there's, uh, six day notice on that. That's nowhere near when I'm coming to the public.
They're not gonna see it day one. That's the problem. Have to find you. Alright, so I think it should be available two to three weeks ahead and be available on the town website. It should be available. Uh, I know you did some worksmithing, but there was also additional documentation, I believe, that's linked to it? Which was not at the last meeting? So we need a final way to be able to see it. The legal notice is not totally inadequate.
No, I, well, that's my opinion. Okay, I'm just presenting. I think yours are even better, I said, I'm sort of good. No, your point's well taken.
Thank you. I'll leave it alone. Alright, uh, the other item I have is on the F O I file that we got to witness at the last meeting. Um. Gonna give you my opinion as a taxpayer because we are paying for that file of stuff. And I don't like it. So I think that every one of those things should be invoiced by the town and proceed in that direction because we didn't ask for it and we shouldn't pay for it. I think the town's entitled to be reimbursed for all that work because it was requested slash demanded. I'm not interested in lawyer speak. I'm interested in the town saying, you give somebody an invoice, you might collect money. If you don't, you will not. My money, I don't want it thrown into the recycling bin. You do what you have to do. That's my opinion.
I'm done. Thank you. Thank you, sir. You in the back?
Uh, Lee Street and Church Street. In light of tonight's discussion on medium availability, I was wondering if there's a possibility, um, that maybe I share, whether we'll be able to get here again in this building as we have done probably longer than that, if you have better office.
I'm on sixteen years, but, um, yeah, we can absolutely accommodate that.
Longer than sixteen years, but, um. Where would I find out availability?
In my office. Well, actually, truth told once, but, um, if the first selectman's office has the availability and can help you with that.
I don't know how we ever lost it, but.
You're talking about for the police division, right?
No, the, uh, Republican town.
Oh, I don't know why that happened either. Um, but Melissa can facilitate.
Because actually I've had a couple of R T C people say, why don't we meet there? Why, by me? I'm not, I'm not the chairman.
My office can help, uh, provide you with the dates that are available. And there are two rooms, you can use the small one, you can use the, the meeting room depending.
The annex on open maybe?
Uh, as Joe pointed out in the previous discussion, that'd be a little more restrictive, just based on other uses, but yeah, I mean, if it's available, you're awesome.
Or our kill possibly? I, I don't know.
We don't keep our kill. Um, but we can, we can help you find a space either at the town hall or the town hall annex. We'll be happy to do that. Anything else? Uh, I would ask to, uh, postpone, uh, Selectmen's reports and, and comments in light of the, the time delay, we're unready. So moves.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No further business to come before the Board of Selectmen has asked for a motion to adjourn.
That we adjourn at seven fifty-four P M.
Very second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at seven fifty-four P M.